You're watching Access Support County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 25th special meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accessesupportcounty.org.
The minutes, one is under the approval of the fencing for the community center cooling tower, and then the addition of the glycol to the system, and then the renewal of the Granicus contract, and then Chief wants to discuss a grant opportunity, also we'll put those at the end of the minutes.
The Granicus is the rental?
Yes, I've got people who monitor that 30 day rental.
Bob, can we discuss the, to have the chief and Larry look into that software for the building commission also?
Yeah, I can put that on there, we can talk about that.
I'm just for him to get information for us.
Yeah, okay, we can do that, alright. At least we can discuss it here and then go from deciding what we think we ought to do, although I believe that the, well, we can talk about it. So first off, approval of fencing for the community center cooling tower, and then the addition of the glycol. I think we had a proposal on that, right Chief?
Yes.
We did, we approved a certain amount.
We did, good evening. Previously, the council had a special meeting back in the summer, approved $150,000 budget for the cooling tower at the community center. Currently, with the information I received today from the clerk's office, it appears that, once we include the purchase of the glycol, that we're at about $125,000 with that budget. But I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council tonight and seek your approval for Action Fence Company to place a six foot high brown vinyl coated chain link fence around the cooling tower with a six foot gate to include four 52 inch bellards that would go across the driveway, which would not permit vehicles to back into the doorway on the east side of the community center. The total price for this contract is $11,072, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council this evening and get your approval to move forward with signing this contract and getting this on their schedule. It looks like they could possibly do the work late November before the ground begins to freeze.
Do you, Mark, do you remember what we approved before?
$150,000 was approved for our all cooling tower project, but for the fencing itself, I don't believe we had a specific dollar amount for that.
Mark, how many, how many feet, how many feet of fencing are we getting? That seems awful high, but maybe I'm reading the schematic wrong.
We're getting 58 feet of fence, six feet high, it's brown vinyl, eight gauge, there is a total of, looks like three quarter posts, several line posts, and then we have the addition of the six foot gate, and the addition of the boring into the asphalt to place the four bellards. They have to go below for us to put those in, they'll be cutting up portions of the asphalt and then boring down and placing those 52 inch bellards across that driveway. And the total cost is $11,072.
My understanding then is that we budgeted 150 and approved 150, and right now with the cooling tower, the fence, and the glycol, is that right?
That is correct.
Is glycol like antifreeze or?
It is, it's like an antifreeze, and then also there is a pending invoice that has yet to be approved, I'm waiting on the committee for the community center to approve. There's an additional invoice out there for a little over $12,000 for work related to the cooling tower, for the starters and other things that needed to be upgraded upon the installation of the cooling tower. We've received the invoice, I had sent it to the committee for review just to make sure that all the work was completed, I should have that invoice back hopefully next week. So when you add that into, along with this, we're still below the $150,000 budget.
It's at $136,000 somehow. So I make a motion to approve that.
I second it.
Any other discussion?
You have to do both.
Yeah, Johnny, you in favor of that?
Yes.
Very good. Yes, I'm in favor, how about you, John?
I'm in favor.
Good deal. Second item, Wayne Meyer Electronics, approval to pay invoice for new police unit emergency lighting.
In the first quarter of this year, the council gave approval to purchase a new police unit for the police department. That vehicle has been on order, and we just received confirmation that it is going to production on December 12th, so therefore we should receive the vehicle January or February of 2023. We have not yet paid for that vehicle. I did go ahead with the emergency lighting for that vehicle, I had placed an order for that back in February, and we have now received the invoice for that because the materials have begun to arrive. The purchase of those materials is $9,570.20 from Wayne Meyer Fleet, and this is a state QPA pricing. For instance, one of the items, the inner edge red and blue lighting bar that goes across the front windshield for the vehicle, MSRP is at $1,666, we have purchased it for $795 under the state pricing, and that's just one example of the savings. So total, I'm asking that the council approve the invoice for $9,570.20 to be paid by the clerk's office, and I believe this was coming out of capital expenditure.
Any discussion?
I move we approve that.
And then there's an install number.
There is, I have the install number. We could also discuss that tonight if I could have authorization to move forward with Minor Electronics to do the installation, the initial installation quote for the outfitting of the new vehicle was approximately $2,800. I would ask that it not to exceed $3,000, because unfortunately, once we get the vehicle here, sometimes we run into some nuances, you know, a hundred or $200 extra. I do not foresee that exceeding $3,000, so if we could approve the installation with Minor Electronics for $3,000, and they are the same vendor that has built our other police vehicles for us in recent years, and then we'll have the purchase of graphics for that vehicle, but I'll be taking that out of our normal operating budget in 2023. I will not need to, you know, ask for additional funds.
Then Bob, then I'll amend my motion to include that extra $3,000 too.
There's a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? Johnny, in favor of that?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes, I'm in favor, how about you, John?
Yes.
Next, approval of fall leaf removal costs.
Originally, we had sent a proposal to the council for the leaf removal beginning next Monday, October 31st through December 2nd, and upon further review of the proposal from Healy's Landscaping, which was $58,800, Superintendent Tom Dolph had noticed that they had charged us for an additional week, which we do sometimes utilize depending on the weather elements and if the leaves are falling on time or not. We asked Healy's to go back, revisit that proposal, and submit a proposal covering the scheduled time from Monday, October 31st through December 2nd. That brought that price to $49,000, but in addition to that, we had asked for a daily rate. So therefore, if the superintendent from the street department feels we need to go past our December 2nd deadline, we would then be billed $560 per day for any additional day. So just for clarification, the original quote that you received for the $58,800 would kind of be the ceiling, more or less the worst case scenario. Our goal is to keep it below the 58.8. Like I said, the proposal before you for the scheduled days is $49,000, but then I would also ask for council approval for any additional day not to exceed five days at $1,960 per day, and that was recommended by our street department superintendent.
The thought is, is that if the weather is bad, the leaves are all wet, you can't pick them up, and we might use those extra days, is that the thought, or are we talking leaves falling later?
Leaves falling later, and us needing to go through the town an additional day or two. The goal is to be completed by December 2nd, the superintendent Dolph has asked that if an additional day or two were needed, that he'd be allowed to proceed with that, and we have a daily cost for that. And then, just to add for clarification, the increase is about $1,300 per week, and that is attributed to fuel costs and labor costs increasing when compared to last year's prices.
And Bob, one of the things that Tom brought up in the public works meeting yesterday, that even though we say the last day is December 2nd, the residents need to have everything out Sunday evening or Sunday afternoon because the truck will come through, I'm not sure which end of town it starts on, and make runs wipe through. I think Deanna will notify our landscaping people that are contacted by residents, because in the past we've had people, especially over by Riley, they just wait till the last minute and expect the town to pick them up.
So Tim, maybe can we put that out for an announcement to let them know what it needs to be out there by?
By Sunday evening.
Yeah, we don't.
Deanna gave, brought me with a list of the details, and I put that out in an email today.
Oh, good.
Which goes to everybody I have, and everybody Bill had, and I'm sure there's people out there who are going to tell me they didn't get it, and with that I encouraged them to email me, but I sent it to every mass email list I could find, so I hope it got distributed well.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve that proposal?
I second it.
Hey, can we, one last thing Tim was talking about earlier, we can say later on then they gotta come and take those leaves and put them in a compost.
I have, I have that proposal for the next, we can talk about that.
That's separate, don't?
Yes, it's a separate proposal, I thought maybe.
Same line, okay.
Yep.
Alright, so Johnny, in favor of that?
Yes, I am, yes.
Yes, I'm in favor, John.
Yep.
Okay.
To Councilman Wall's point on, so we just discussed about the pickup of the leaves in the community, now we have to discuss the actual removal of the leaves from our public works facility to a compost facility that is EPA approved in that. So we have a price from Felotovitch Construction, which is the same company we've used in previous years. The total cost is $18,000 for the disposal of the leaves. Payment would be $9,000 when they first start removing the leaves from our property, and then the final $9,000 at the completion. The first payment would be due sometime in the month of November, according to Superintendent Dolph, and then he has already met with the owner of the company that does this proposal for us, and everybody is on the same page as far as removal and starting times.
Is that an increase?
It is a slight increase, I believe it's up about $3,000, $1,500 each time over the previous year, and again, it's attributed to fuel costs for the hauling of the leaves.
I'll make a motion to approve that, is there a second?
I second it.
Question, Johnny, in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mary Lou?
I'm in favor, John.
I am.
Okay, approval for purchase of uniforms, necessary equipment, and ballistic vests for new deputy marshal not to exceed $5,500 from the Riverboat Funds.
So originally this year, in our equipment fund, I found that our ballistic vests for our reserve officers, they expire in the month of December. The manufacturer lifespan of a body armor ballistic vest for a police officer is five years, so ours are expiring this December. I went in and had to order new vests for our reserve unit, and the total cost of that is $6,525, which I confirmed today with our clerk's office, Helen had confirmed that we have approximately $7,000 left in our budget for equipment, so therefore I'll be utilizing that line item to pay for the new vest for our reserve deputies. That depleted my equipment and clothing allowance, so therefore I'm asking the council this evening for an expenditure to come out of Riverboat funding not to exceed $5,500 for the purchase of uniforms, the necessary equipment, and a ballistic vest for the new deputy marshal that we are hopeful to hire in the month of November. And I anticipated probably between $4,000 and $5,000, but with the way things have been going, costs associated, I feel that $5,500 not to exceed, I can stay underneath that budget. And that will include new firearms for the new officer. Along with this proposal, I would like to ask the council for approval tonight, we've been approached by Deputy Togan Babcock's family, and again, our sincere condolences go out to the family, that they have asked for both of his firearms, both of his Glock handguns, his son is a police officer with the Michigan City Police Department. Typically, when an officer retires from a department with 20 years of service, we gift their two firearms to them. Deputy Babcock's son has asked that the town of Long Beach gift both of his father's Glock pistols to the family, they're going to build a memorial box to have both of them in, since his father was a firearms instructor, his dad also has put several rounds through those more than what a normal officer would do. The cost to us, if I was to trade those in, I would get approximately about $275 to $300 for each one, so we could get $600 credit if I was to trade them in. The cost of new handguns is $928 for two handguns. Obviously, my recommendation is that we issue new handguns to the new deputy because of the, you know, amount of rounds that were put through the previous ones, I don't want to put those into service, so my recommendation is that as a gift to the Babcock family, I generate a letter with the serial numbers of the weapons and the model numbers, gifting the two weapons to the family for them to memorialize in a shadow box for Deputy Babcock and his family. So that would be my second request, along with the $5,500, and that $5,500 includes the purchase of those new handguns, so that would be included.
Is there anything you can do to disable those guns? I'm not, not a big fan of giving guns to.
We, we've done it before with other officers that retire and that, I'm sure the family before putting them in a shadow box, you can remove the firing pin from them, it's a pretty simple thing to do. So we can ask the family to do that when we, you know, surrender them, and like, so we'll have a letter to substantiate the gifting of them as well, so. And this has been done for, you know, other law enforcement officers in the past as well, so.
I make a motion that we approve the $5,500 for the new deputy marshal, and that we also approve gifting the two Glock guns to the Babcock family.
I would just amend it to say that we asked them to remove the firing pins. Any other discussion? John, I'm in favor, are you in favor of that?
I'm in favor of that.
Yes, I'm in favor, John.
Yep.
Okay, deputy marshal hiring procedures slash recommendations.
So unfortunately, we have to begin the process of the search for a new deputy marshal, in all fairness, as we begin the search, I had sent out an email to all of our part-time deputy marshals that are currently serving the Long Beach community, of which I had two who have responded of interest, being promoted from part-time status to full-time status. Therefore, I have set interviews for this Thursday, one at 10 a.m. and one at 2 p.m. My recommendation to the council, and I wanted to bring this forward tonight to get input from you and also seek your approval, is that I would like to have myself, Sergeant James Schooly, and the HR committee chairperson, which will be Councilwoman McFadden, to sit in on the interviews. The three of us would interview both of the deputies. If out of the interview process, we feel that one or both of them are eligible to move forward from there, I would then continue with a criminal background investigation, speaking to, you know, current and past employers, spouses, surrounding neighbors of where the individuals live, and then my recommendation from that interview would be to bring a recommendation to the town council at your November town council meeting, asking that we move forward with the hiring of our next deputy marshal. So I'm looking for any suggestions or input from the council this evening, to see if you agree, or if you would like me to take another avenue of approach.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you meant, I confused.
Be myself, the chief deputy, Sergeant Schooly, and then the chairperson of the HR committee, because I wanted to have the HR committee involved as well, and that would be Mary Lou McFadden sitting in for the HR committee.
But they don't have a decision?
They have a decision, no, it'd just be a recommendation, and then I would continue on with the criminal background investigation, and then the final decision would be made at the November town council meeting, I would come forward with a recommendation to the town council.
Ultimately, I'd like the, my recommendation would be the town council to stay as much out of the way of this process as possible, and Chief handle it, but I realize that we have to approve it, so I'd like to make a motion and do what the chief suggested.
I second it.
Any other discussion? Johnny, you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Mary Lou?
Yes, I'm in favor, John.
Yep.
Okay, first reading of the topography ordinance, topography slash steep slope ordinance, I think everybody's gotten a copy of that, was sent to the council with favorable recommendation from the advisory planning commission. Procedure is for us to?
Entertain a margin to prove it on first reading by a title.
So I would make that motion.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Now, I got a question on this. On, you talked about an Indiana registered professional geotechnical engineer, and the homeowner would hire one, I understand that, and then we're gonna make the homeowner then pay for another one that the town would hire, is that correct?
The building commission would have the option of engaging their own if we think that the geotechnical engineer that the homeowner has chosen is somehow deficient or biased or whatever. But yeah, I don't think we can let them simply choose their geotechnical engineer without some garb, and that's the idea.
Couldn't, wouldn't one possibility be to have the homeowner and the town or building commission select a engineer, so you don't have two, two engineers competing against each other and/or the homeowner having to pay for two engineers, which I assume are rather expensive to utilize?
Now, hopefully that, that could happen, and hopefully that would happen, I would hope that it'd be very few times that the town would feel necessary to hire their own, but if you get some very stubborn homeowner who wants his brother-in-law, the geotechnical engineer, to give his opinion, then I think the town needs to protect itself from that situation.
Well, I assume these are specialized fields of engineering work, couldn't we make a recommended list? Have, I mean, there's not that, there's not that many, I don't think there's that many in Indiana that you're gonna pick from anyway, in the area.
They both don't have to reinvent the wheel, what'll happen is the, the property owner will present his study, and if there's any controversial items or items that we have any questions on, then you could have somebody review it, they're not gonna have to do the same amount of work that the first engineer did, you're gonna have the study in hand with documentation, drawings, sketches, you know, calculations, and then if the town decided they needed to have the additional engineer, he's not gonna start from scratch, all he's gonna do is review the documents submitted by the other engineer if I understand it correctly. So there won't be a huge cost in that review process as compared to the original documents.
And from experience, I can tell you that trying to keep a list of engineers that are approved by the town is difficult, we took that route with the short line protection ordinance, and I'm afraid if we went back and looked at our list, we might find some of those people are now out of business, so, you know, the idea is to have a document that will hopefully work.
What you could do, what you could do, John, is you could change that language to "may" rather than "shall" in that clause, if that's what your concern is.
Yeah, that'd be helpful too, yeah, I think so, so that way there's no question, although if you read it just word for word, it looks like you have to. But I, but I agree with you, John, if it's a, you know, if it's a question with the building commission, then yeah, then we would want to get another, another opinion, but yeah, I'd, I'd go along with that change. Also, another question I got, and I don't understand, the slope, the 32, what is it, 34% slope, is that it?
That's correct. Before you get into that, John, just one second, so what we're talking about then is in, in paragraph B, CIS, so B CIS, says all such engineering studies shall be evaluated on behalf of the town by law, we can say maybe.
Maybe, yeah, I moved it, yeah, I would suggest that modification.
So Chris, that's the only change I think.
And then, John, you had concerns?
And the other question is a 34, 34 degrees, I remember reading some emails back and forth, I think maybe from one of the people from the APC, and was there a question on that, was there other?
34 degrees.
Are we changing the percentage, or is it other communities, is that pretty, pretty what everybody else was going by?
34 degrees is the natural repose of dry sand, that's why we chose that, because, you know, we're a little different community, we're a sand dune community, and so dry sand is what we really need to use as our benchmark.
Well, Dunland Beach, is that what they use, and Missy Anna Shores, and?
My guess is Dunland Beach hasn't even thought of us.
Dunland Beach is subject to whatever the board counts, if you make that difference. So they're subject to the county.
I thought, I thought Seth was, McCormick was, was doing a lot of research on that.
He did, 34 degrees is what the APC, including Seth, decided was a reasonable number.
Yeah, so that's like, you know, you're, if you had a 150 foot deep lot, you're talking about, that's pretty, that's pretty liberal, I would say.
Yeah, would this mainly affect the people on Lakeside, or is it gonna affect the whole town?
It will affect anybody on a steep slope, but again, this doesn't include the entire slope, this just includes the part of your property that you're building the structure on.
Mm-hmm.
So you could choose, if you've got a steep slope in your backyard, you could choose to build your house forward of that, and you wouldn't, this ordinance wouldn't be a hindrance to you at all.
I think the other thing that's important to note is this steep slope inclusion, and that was previously the topography ordinance only, they're known, little known, not sure if it comes up very often, there's been a resolution in place for 20 years, and there's a couple of versions of it, so this isn't simply codifying it so that everybody's aware of it. This practice has been in place for a long time, that doesn't mean you do it just because it has been, but it honestly came up in the last year, and that's where the discussion came up at, at the APC level is, rather than, and why it was ever adopted in resolution form, I have no idea, but unless somebody was savvy enough to remember it on the building commission or an APC, not everybody would even know that it existed, so that part of it, what I suggest is any changes, since there's not an APC meeting and just procedurally, if you have changes, you have to kick this back with suggestions to the APC, and then if they adopt them, then it's, then they're accepted, right? So I suggest that maybe if there are any additional ones that you come back, since you're only doing our first reading, and then there's an APC meeting that follows your next council meeting, that you could give some of those answers to, John, if you're not satisfied tonight with some of the information.
Well, I'm just, you know, I, you know, this is, oh, interesting, and I didn't know the, you know, the reasons for, that's all I wanted to know, is, is how we come up with 34%, and is our other communities, is that what the working number is? I, I don't know, but I thought Seth, I thought Seth was saying that he wanted to, maybe I misread it or don't remember correctly, but that he wanted to check it further to see what other communities were doing, but.
Yeah, he did check further, and this, but this was kind of the consensus, including him.
Okay.
So Chris, you're saying that the shade, the shell from "may" has to go back to the APC?
Any change, they gave you a favorable recommendation, so any change you make to their version has to go back to them.
Okay.
Okay.
I will make sure that.
But there's no harm, no foul, because you have another meeting before the APC meeting, right? So it gives everybody a second bite for the next reading or consideration at your, at the next town council meeting, which is November, right? And then there's an APC meeting that follows, so that if you can put it back on the agenda, make a decision.
So.
So you're just addressing this on first reading tonight, any?
We can pass it first reading.
Yes.
With the amendment, so.
Do you want, do you want to add some more language?
Do you want, do you want to add some more language then? I didn't realize I had to go back then, because it's not quite so clear. So if you put in "may" be evaluated, do you want to put the condition under which it may be evaluated, meaning that if the, if the building commission so chooses, they have that language on it?
Yeah, well-
Or not?
John, what's the, what's the section on that?
B six.
B six, okay.
So read it with the man, how does that sound?
Okay, so right now, we're only changing one word.
Yep.
"All such engineering studies and reports," meaning the ones that were provided by the homeowner, "shall be eval, shall be evaluated," it was the original language. If we change that to "may be evaluated" "on behalf of the town by a licensed Indiana registered professional geotechnical or an engineering firm of its choosing." So that's probably sufficient.
You could, or you could put at the discretion of the building, if you want. You think that should be there, Chris?
The intent was to have a catch-all, right? If you weren't happy, much like on the shoreline protection ordinance, although this one is a little more widespread because it affects anybody with the slope. So it's, it's what your preferences. Maybe it's fine with the may.
Okay. So I would make a motion to approve on first reading the amended version with shell, with may for shell in section B six. Is there a second?
I'm seconding.
John, are you in favor?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
I'm in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, I will make sure this goes back to the APC.
Well, if it'll come back, we'll deal with, on that second reading, right? We'll see if there's any other changes. The APC's a, that's right.
Got it.
So you can send them back the version. Maybe there'll be other changes, and we can get a little more information. Because Larry had a good summary on the, he had a chart of the different kinds of sand and the calculations. And in fact, the way that he suggested kind of cleaned up the languages in there for those who don't understand slope or weren't good at geography. So I can have Larry send that summary, too.
Probably good.
Next agenda, Granicus renewal?
We are in our second year of utilizing the services of Granicus, which assist us in monitoring our short-term rentals. They scrub all the various public listings for rental properties. We've had great success with them. In fact, this year for 2022 is the first year that we've begun to receive leases from residents who are leasing their properties for thirty days or more. I believe we received at least three of them in total this year. So before us is a contract renewal. We would not receive an invoice until the month of December. To renew our contract with Granicus, they are offering us the same contract price of $2,502. That is the same price that we paid this year for their services to continue the monitoring of any short-term rentals in the Long Beach community. And a recommendation would be to move forward with continuing that service agreement with them.
So it's $2,000 for the whole year?
For the entire year, it's $2,502. It's the same as what we paid this year.
Their computer does auto-work.
Okay.
The period of performance would start January 6, 2023, and our contract would conclude January 5, 2024. And that's the total price for that contract.
So I'd make a motion to approve that renewal. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? John?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm in favor.
John?
Aye.
Okay, Chief, you had information on it.
Brand, please spark. Yesterday, I came across information from another police chief in northwest Indiana that a grant opportunity exists with the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. It is a burn grant. In fact, when we recently had our meeting with Christiansen and Company, that was one of the organizations, the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, that we were wanting them to research grants on. This specific grant opportunity closes on November 3. And one of the points for this grant is the updating of police department policies and procedures related to use of force, pursuits, shooting investigations, racial profiling, any type of biased crimes and that. So I've looked at our policies, and this would be a good opportunity for us to have all of the policies for the police department updated. And their contract, I have a Zoom meeting tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. to get a proposal from Lexipol, which is the company that we previously used here at the town of Long Beach for the policies for the police department. Once I get that contract price, they are also offering us the opportunity to submit the grant at the cost of $2,500. That's for them to write the grant, submit the grant, and they're pretty certain that they would get the grant funding because they've had success in the past. And I do not know if this opportunity will be offered to us because if we cannot get an extension on the grant opportunity, we would be denied tomorrow. So the reason I'm bringing this forward tonight is we do not have $2,500 in our current budget. And speaking with the clerk's office, we could take it out of cedent. It would be obviously payable upon us entering into this contract. So I'm just seeking the consent of the council. If this opportunity does present itself after my Zoom meeting tomorrow or sometime this week, I wouldn't be able to come back to the council until your November meeting, and it would be too late to have this grant submission in. And it's a no-match grant, so therefore, if we are awarded the grant, we do not have to put any matching funds forward. The only cost to us would be the $2,500 for them to write the grant and submit it. I did give some consideration if we could approach Christiansen and Company to write this specific grant, but unfortunately, they do not specialize in policy grant writing procedures. Lexipol is a nationwide firm that works with specifically criminal justice, law enforcement agencies, and therefore, I feel very comfortable moving forward with them if the opportunity presents itself.
They could get this, Chief, they could get this grant prepared in time, the November deadline?
Not by November 3, but they are asking if they can get an extension. They just did it for the Chesterton Police Department. An extension, I believe, to November 19. If they can get a similar extension for us, then they feel confident that they could draft a proposal, do the entire grant submission with all the attachments that are necessary, and the pricing from their company to cover the cost. And then we would have to just pay them the $2,500 to move forward with their proposal.
And then how much would we receive?
It's typically upwards in twenty-some thousand dollars to have all the policies reviewed and then, so.
So Chief, without Christiansen's input, would we be at the same place we are now? You're more familiar with this grant before?
I'm very familiar with the grant. I've submitted other burns grants in the past. And this specific grant, when it opened up this year, is specifically for policy review and updating policies. So I'm very familiar with both companies, the grant and with Lexipol. We currently have a contract with Lexipol. Lexipol provides us with our annual online video training for police officers, which is state mandated training. We have a contract with them. I believe we pay them currently a little over $2,000 a year for Police One, which is a video platform that allows us to go onto the Police One Academy, pick out specific videos for training, and then we're able to submit that for training and our credits to the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. So we are familiar with Lexipol, have a very good working relationship with them, and hopefully, they could get this grant submission and extension for us.
Really, Christiansen had nothing to do with this. I guess the reason I ask is so far, I haven't been very impressed with any value we've gotten out of the money you gave Christiansen. We had a meeting with them about three weeks ago, getting a list of grants we're interested in, and I haven't heard anything.
This one I came across, I have like a weekly phone call with some of the area police chiefs. I touch base with them. And yesterday, in speaking with the police chief from Chesterton, Chief Richardson shared with me that he came across it last week. He had a meeting yesterday with Lexipol, and Lexipol was able to get him an extension. So I reached out to Lexipol first thing this morning. I had a 2:00 phone call with them today. And then they set a Zoom call for tomorrow in hopes of continuing our conversation, but I just wanted to get your approval, one, to move forward with the grant submission, if approved, and then, two, the funding for it at $2,500 is to a boss.
Where did you see that?
If it's come out cedent.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Any other discussion? John?
I approve.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
I'm in favor, John?
Aye.
Okay, John, the software update with building commission covered process? This is kind of your, your deal, right?
Yeah, after the last building commission meeting, I had occasion to talk with Larry and Lou, and we're just commenting on the way these meetings go. And as I indicated in my emails, some of them are quite lengthy. Many of them are disjointed. And if there's any way we could somehow simplify the procedure for the homeowners and especially the commission and work that Larry does to, to make the process a little more uniform and streamlined. And Larry informed me that he believed, I don't know, several years ago, a former town council had approved, doing just that very thing after very much discussion and, and research by Larry and Pete Byvotes. And they came up with a proposal with the company, and the town council unanimously, I believe, voted to go forward with it. And for whatever reason, I'm not certain why, I kind of, kind of think I know why, but it never, never, never followed or went past that. Maybe Bob knows a little bit more about that, because I think he might have been on the council then, right, Bob?
I was. Yeah, it sort of died at the building commission level. But the concern that I have, and I share your concern, that right now, we're pretty much paper-based. And basically, if something happened to the individual who's keeping track of all that paper, it would be in big trouble because we have nothing on any kind of computer, no flash drives, nothing. Plus, I do think it would simplify the process. So I agree. I think it's maybe time to push the building commission. And so I guess I would make a motion that the, ask-
Chief?
Well, Chief and Larry to basically research programs. I think Chief has already looked into some of those, at least as far as what the county and Michigan City are using, and maybe come back with a recommendation at some point, what system-
What's out there and what, what would, what would help us? Because I think we, we want help. And I think it'll simplify and organize things a lot better.
I would just say that I don't think it's going to be a quick process. Attorney Willoughby's been very helpful, providing some information from some contacts out there that may be able to help us as well, kind of research this. I've reached out to Sioux Downs at the city of Michigan City. They are semi-electronic, they're not 100% electronic themselves. The software that they were looking at, New World, wasn't matching up to their financial software. So I think we'll continue to research it with Larry's input and anyone else that has suggestions, and hopefully, in the, you know, next few months, come up with a recommendation. But yes, I have no objections researching it.
That'll be great.
Right, so I'd make a motion to authorize them to do the research.
I second it.
Go ahead, John.
I'll second it, yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
I'm in favor, John. Good, I got no other agenda items. Anybody else got anything you want to talk about?
I just have one thing I want to, for informational purposes. The glyco, the antifreeze additive that was placed into the new cooling tower, I had learned late last week that we had an unfortunate break in one of the filters that is in that system, and we had lost some of that additive. To what extent, I don't have the exact total of what the total loss was, but I can tell you there's enough additive still in the system and in the remaining barrels to winterize the cooling tower for this year. I am going to move forward with contacting Michigan Insurance to try and recapture possibly some of the loss of this unfortunate mechanical mishap and see if it is covered by insurance, and I can let the council know what my findings are. I just wanted to be very transparent with the council tonight to let you know that the community center committee had provided me with information from Lake Shore Mechanical and from Hydro, which is the company that added the additive to the system. They have isolated the location of where the leak had occurred. They have assured me that that has been isolated and can no longer leak from that specific area. Unfortunately, with the age of the system that's over there, these things unfortunately happen. But I want to assure the council that we are aware of it, we are working on it, and I am trying to find a solution to recapture some of the loss of that additive. If anybody has any questions, I just, again, it's for informational purposes. I just want everybody to be aware of what's going on at the community center.
Any other comments?
Anita Remages, 2300 Florham. I noticed tonight that one of the council members is missing and other council members here on Zoom. And thank you, Mr. Willoughby, you sent me the Zoom requirements. But I think particularly now with winter being here and residents who are part-time are not able to attend meetings or plan trips and then plan to Zoom. And I'm curious how that will be. I know on Tree Board and I know on HR, there are two residents who have expressed that they leave town. And so I'm wondering, is it up to the H, is it up to the chair? Is it up to, who will monitor at what point people are missing meetings or people have not appeared in person at a correct time? Or if they have Zoomed for too many meetings?
Then it should reflect how people attended. So these minutes, I would expect, would show that John Stone wasn't here and that John Coker was on some-
I was, I was in the hospital yesterday, and I'm not able to drive, so.
Yeah, no. I'm not, I'm not asking where you work and-
I don't think you want me to have a meeting tonight. I don't think you want me to have a meeting tonight. Bob knows why.
All I'm saying is, I'm just monitoring, that's public comment.
To answer that question, and given that you don't have a gigantic public tonight, these requirements, under the emergency scenario and under regular times, have all been communicated to each of the boards at some point. It's up to each board to monitor, to keep a list, to see who's attended more than 50%, more than two consecutively. There is an exception, you know, as an example, on the building commission, Mr. Wall is accepted due to his medical condition. So there are some exceptions, but it is up to each board. And then if there's an issue with regard to appointees, et cetera, to the extent they're under the direction of the council, that should be reported, so.
So they would report back to the council then, or to Dr. Lemay?
Just make it known, but it is up to each, you know, the BZA, the APC, the Tree Board, various boards to keep track of themselves.
Okay. My other comment was you mentioned that you're not comfortable, or you would prefer, I shouldn't say not comfortable, that you would prefer that the council not be too involved in the process of hiring a deputy marshal. And I understand, Ms. McFadden, that you are the HR chair, but given the fact that I think you're not at your head not being too involved, it might be useful that someone else, if Chief felt that somebody else needed to be there, that it not be you, as a council member.
Any other public comments on Zoom? Any council comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
No, I didn't. I was in, you may.
Oh, I mean-
Somebody else wants to second it. You want to second it, John?
Sure, I'll second it.
All right. Are you in favor?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
I'm in favor, John?
Yes.
I'm adjourned. Okay.